Yeah, I mean the biggest problems are over and then it's all about.
Oh, I don't remember.
You know, chosen way. People that have to.
Had their.
Got it. This is Baltimore City Council Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. I'm joined to my left by Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District.
Thank you.
To my immediate right, Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee. To her right, Kara Kuntz, Legislative Director for Council President Jack Young. To her right, Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District. And to her immediate right, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District. Also would like to acknowledge Karan Banks and Karen Stokes from the Mayor's Office, and Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District. First story of business, if you have a cellphone, if you have anything that makes noise, please turn that device off. If you are planning on testifying, there was a sign-in sheet. If you have not signed that sign-in sheet, you will not be called up to testify. It is not too late to sign that sign-in sheet. We're going to start off with City Council Bill 17-0006R, Funding for the Consent Decree Between the Baltimore City Police Department and the United States Department of Justice, which was introduced by Councilman Brandon Scott. We received responses to the committee's questions from the previous hearing on April 4th. Unfortunately, we did not receive those until this afternoon. The committee would like time to review those questions, so instead of having a voting session for that today, we will go into recess for that. No date or time has been set for a follow-up hearing for a voting session on that. Now, what we are all here for, City Council Bill 17-0018R, Investigative Hearing, Crossing Guards, introduced by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark and Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer. Before we begin, I think it's important to note, the committee is obviously appreciative of the mayor and the administration for quote-unquote "taking care of this situation at a high level," essentially ensuring the four hours and ensuring that the budget funding is there. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the first cosponsor, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to the mayor and to my colleagues and to for helping us come to an agreement, I believe. We'll be asking questions about the specifics. In the past two, I'd just like to kind of review what got us here. It's a new administration now, but in the past two years, since the 2015 school year, we have lost 64 funded positions of crossing guards and numerous crossing locations. In school year 2015 to 16, the city funded 321 crossing guard positions, including 33 substitutes. In the current school year now, the number shrank to 290 with substitutes eliminated and with many positions not filled. In the coming school year, Finance projects 290 funded positions, again with no substitutes funded, representing a loss of the 64 positions in two years. Thirty corners have also been eliminated as the population of crossing guards shrank. Last year, only 245 of the funded positions were filled. This year, only 246 were filled. For the coming school year, Finance recommends 290 budgeted positions, no substitutes. We hope that all 290 will be funded because we need them very much. So, this school year, as the negotiations were pending about numbers of hours, Finance had budgeted two hours per crossing guard, but they continued at four hours because negotiations have never been resolved to that end and now don't have to be resolved to that end because the mayor says she likes the number four. It just sounds good. So, we would like all the positions funded with no vacancies kept open, and that would mean 44 more positions filled and on the streets than we have today. So, I'd like to just talk for a moment, because we are being viewed on television as well, about why it is that crossing guards need the four hours a day instead of one in the morning and one in the afternoon. And I'm quoting actually from a letter from the president of the City Union of Baltimore. Although crossing guards may work fewer than the current two hours in the morning and two in the afternoon, this minimum payment was created, has been traditionally honored by the city for the following reasons. The crossing guards must report to work in a split shift fashion, in the morning and again in the afternoon. This requires them to dress in uniforms twice daily, travel to their assigned locations twice daily, and remain on the job till the last child is safely crossed. In addition, guards must report to and from a designated location to sign out, in and out each day. A double reporting, which requires them to remain local for most of the day, placing limitations on their ability to make other plans or take other part-time jobs. Crossing guards need to be present for early arriving and late dismissing children, and especially in these difficult times, to run interference when troubles erupt. Finally, close the gap depends on attracting more students. We've talked about closing the gap for the Baltimore City Public Schools. One of the things that means is that we need, since we are paid by the state per pupil, we need to get the population of our schools back up again and on the move. That means more children. We're all working to recruit children for the Baltimore City Public Schools. These families that are looking at our schools are going to look first and foremost at how safe it is for their children to get there and get home. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I know that you're going to give my cosponsor a chance to be heard. I'm very pleased with the cooperation we've received, and I'm really appreciative of the mayor for all she has done so quickly, once this issue was raised, to solve, I think, to solve the problem, and so this will be a nice hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it brief. First off, I do want to thank the mayor for immediately addressing this issue. I mean, we put in this bill the very next day, or maybe even the same day. The mayor had immediately jumped on it, and we appreciate that because we know we don't play games when it comes to our children's safety, and this is something extremely important to make sure our children get safely to and from school. A couple other things that we're still looking to discuss would be the process in which, you know, the call-out takes place, just to make sure that no corner is left unattended because it literally is a matter of life and death if a corner is left unattended with the speeds in which people drive these, this day and age, and how distracted drivers are. We cannot leave any corner unattended, whether somebody calls out sick, whatever it may be. That corner needs to be manned and manned properly to make sure that somebody looking down at their phone or somebody who's going in excess of speed would notice a kid who runs out into the street on their way to school. And so, I appreciate my cosponsor, Councilwoman Clark, and I had both been simultaneously working on legislation dealing with this to improve the safety of our kids, and we found that out and decided we're going to team up and work together. And so, I appreciate all of you guys coming out to assist us in this and to offer testimony. As a father of two daughters, I know that our children's safety is a number-one priority for me and for all of us here, and so I appreciate all of you guys coming out.
Thank you, Councilman. I forgot to acknowledge Patrick Fleming from Government Relations from DOT, Chief Kason, who heads up Parking and Traffic Enforcement from DOT, and Lindsey Wines, the Chief Administrative Officer from DOT, Andrew Klein, Budget Director, Major Hamm from City Schools Police, Tiffany Walker from Cub, and pardon me, Carmelita Bartholomew from the Crossing Guards. And?
Ms. Thompson.
Ms. Thompson.
Yeah, Ms. Thompson.
Very nice to see you, ma'am. We're going to start off with, let's get into the budget first. Mr. Klein, we have your agency report. It appears that you're taking no position, and I believe you have a little bit of information to share with the committee.
I'm the chair.
If you could go up to the, are you live? That one's live up there.
We'd like you to stand up there.
I don't mind if you sit, but Councilwoman Clark wants you to stand.
I could use something to put the papers on.
Give me a little exercise today. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. In our bill response, we provided a table showing the actual and budgeted expenditures from fiscal 2012 through our recommended plan for fiscal 2018, and some notes, brief notes, on explaining changes from year to year. So, we're here to participate, answer questions, but otherwise, no position on the resolution.
I have.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We're going to hold off on questions of agency officials, if that's all right, Councilwoman, until we get through everyone.
Sure.
Next up, we have Major Hamm from City Schools, and you are going to be speaking on behalf of CEO Santa Lisa's, and my understanding from this letter is that you, that City Schools and City Schools Police are in support of this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Greetings, members of the Baltimore City Council. My name is Major Kale Hamm. I'm the Acting Chief of School Police. I'm representing City Schools today, and we are requesting that you review and help reverse the recent annual reductions in crossing guard personnel, elimination of previously assigned crossing guard locations, and the proposed cutback of hours paid for crossing guard services.
All right. Let's hear it for the schools. Close that gap.
We have recorded 119 car accidents since August of 2016 during this school year. Of that, 119, 13 have been pedestrians who have been struck. That's just this school year. Some of our intersections near schools are extremely dangerous and create a public safety issue for students who transition to and from school, especially our younger scholars that come to school. We are receiving requests from principals daily for more crossing guards, and I've been in communication with Chief Kason on several occasions when we weren't able to have a crossing guard at a particular school where the intersections were very busy. So, that's our positions as City Schools. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And I got your title right, major or chief?
It's major, but Acting Chief.
Thank you, sir. Patrick, I'm going to defer to you. I know DOT has a presentation that's six slides, and I believe that has been handed out to the committee or is in the process of being handed out to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wines.
Okay. So, this presentation will provide a brief history to changes in the crossing guard program over the past few years in reference to the bill. By fiscal 2013, the crossing guard budget had grown to more than $6 million annually. There was no set standard for determining where crossing guards were being placed. So, through the mayoral fellow program, a study was conducted on the existing crossing guard program. The study examined current business practices at the time and provided recommendations for procedures for improved performance. The study also determined that there were corners where there were low usage and did not warrant a crossing guard based on national standards. As such, a new criteria was established that would be used by DOT in determining whether crossing guards were necessary at a various corner. The manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or MUTCD, was used as a basis for developing criteria to assess and assign crossing guard corners. The MUTCD recommends a crossing guard at a corner with 40 or more students crossing in a two-hour window. DOT's established criteria is actually 30 children in a two-hour window, less than the national established standards. In addition to the number of crossing children, the criteria also includes requirements for traffic counts, crosswalks, crossings to be on a suggested route of school, and we actually have copies of the criteria available for all of you. As crossing guards retired or left city service, DOT adjusted the number of budgeted positions to reflect the number of staff needed for corners that met the established criteria. There were no layoffs as a result of the program and the review that was conducted. In July 2016, I think this touches on what you talked about, all the substitute crossing guards that we had were actually moved into full-time budgeted positions. That's why it seems as though they were eliminated. They were actually moved into budgeted positions. There are currently 255 guards, so we've actually up from what we previously reported. 255. The crossing guards are one piece of DOT's larger pedestrian safety strategy when it comes to children, known as safe routes to school. The Safe Routes to School program works with Baltimore City Public Schools to identify the safest route for children to get to school. And DOT began painting lime green footprints back in 2014 that I'm sure some of you are very familiar with, and have completed these at 35 different schools across the city. These footprints designate the safest way for children to travel to school. In addition, DOT regularly refreshes or installs crosswalks and pedestrian countdown signals along the routes for children to travel. We also teach children about safely crossing the street through Safety City, providing education in the schools, and through public service announcements, and we actually have a, one of the public service announcements, it's about five minutes, so you guys can look at it later or we can play it now, but it's something that we did with the schools back in 20, or with children from the schools in 2014, showing them the best way to cross to school. So, it's up to you guys if you want to watch it.
First thing is, on the second slide, you mentioned the study. Did you say that's something that you have available?
Yeah, we can provide it.
Okay. If you could please email that to Ms. Curran.
Sure, we'll have to get you a clean copy.
To the committee. And the second thing is, does anyone on the committee have any objections with watching the five-minute video?
It's fine with me.
Very cute. Is it working, Patrick? Assuming there's internet.
It happens all the time.
Well, I'll send it to you because it's really great.
Okay.
It's actually really, it's really good.
You know, it's like, half the time, it doesn't, it just doesn't work.
All right, well, I'm glad to know I'm not the only one it doesn't work for.
No, 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 not at all.
But we'll send it to you because it's a really good piece.
Can you email it?
Yeah, it's on YouTube. So, in terms of our last slide, as you guys have stated and as Mayor Pugh has said, the crossing guards will be, continue to be compensated at the rate of four hours per day. We'll continue to do reviews of existing crossing guard corners on a regular basis. We'll review and evaluate all requests for new crossing guards based on the criteria that we have, and we're also going to continue to expand our Safe Routes to School program. We're going to continue to paint the lime green footprints. We're going to continue to have children at Safety City, and we're actually doing a larger-scale overall pedestrian safety program for the entire city known as Towards Zero. So, this will be rolled into that, and that's a much larger goal of having zero pedestrian fatalities across the entire city. So, that's our presentation.
Thank you very much. We're going to go a bit out of order, and we're going to go to Cub and the Crossing Guards. Then, we're going to take questions from the committee, and then we'll go to members of the public who have questions. With that, Ms. Tiffany Walker from Cub.
Can we hold?
Ms. Walker, if you, if you don't mind?
I'll stay. Do you have the remote? The TV remote. No. you later. First, let's review three helpers you already know. The stop sign, the crossing guard, and the. Welcome, everyone. Today, we're going to talk about walking safely to and from school. In this video, we will use safe routes as we walk to school. Along the way, you'll see several helpers that you can use to get to school. Watch and listen carefully because you'll see and hear answers to some questions I'm going to ask you later. First, let's review three helpers you already know. The stop sign, the crossing guard, and the crosswalk. We always stop at a stop sign to look left, look right, and look left again before crossing the street. We see the crossing guard on the corner as we come to school in the morning and go home in the afternoon. The crossing guard asks us to walk in the middle of the crosswalk. Now, let's look at some more helpers. The push button and the countdown signal. We press the push button to get the traffic light to change so we can safely cross the street. The countdown signal tells us how much time we have to safely cross the street. We also have some new helpers to use on our way to school. This is a flashing school beacon. It tells drivers to slow down because they're near a school. The flashing beacon means children are walking to and from school. Our last new helper are these fun lime green footprints on the sidewalk. The lime green footprints let children and parents know this is a safe route to school. The best place to cross the street is at the crosswalk. If you see a crossing guard cross with the crossing guard, if there's no crossing guard, press the push button, wait for the countdown signal to start, look left, look right, and left again, then cross in the middle of the crosswalk. When you see the walking man symbol, look left, look right, and left again, then carefully cross the street in the middle of the crosswalk. When you see the flashing hand symbol, finish crossing the street if you have already begun to do so. If you have not begun to cross the street, wait until your next turn to cross the street. When you see the steady hand, do not try to cross the street. Wait until the walking man symbol is shown again before you cross the street. When walking along a safe route to school, always walk on the sidewalk. Do not walk in the street. Running and playing on the sidewalk is not safe. Do not run or play on the sidewalk while walking to school. Always watch out for moving vehicles. Walking between parked cars is not safe. Do not walk between parked cars. Follow the lime green footprints to school. The lime green footprints means this is a safe route to school. Now, let's see how closely you've been listening. What are some of the helpers you can use as you walk safely to school? Where is the safest place to cross the street? The best place to cross the street is at the crosswalk. Which ways do you look before you safely cross the street? Look left, look right, and left again. What is on the sidewalk to lead you to school? The lime green footprints let children and parents know this is a safe route to school. Your sidewalks may not have footprints leading to your school yet, but watch out for them. They will be walking along a safe route to your school soon. We hope you've enjoyed this video about pedestrian safety and walking to school using safe routes to school. Please remember to follow the lime green safety steps to school and follow the safe routes to school.
Ms. Walker, apologize for interrupting you. Please continue.
No problem, no problem. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Budget and Appropriations Committee. My name is Tiffany Walker. I'm the Executive President for the City Union of Baltimore that represents 2,676 professionals who work for the city of Baltimore. Among that number are 290 school crossing guards that are part of our union, and on behalf, on their behalf, I want to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding concerns and the reduction of crossing guard positions that have been trending in this city for some time. It's probably not necessary for me to spend too much time tonight talking about the type of work our crossing guards do. Most of us, at one point in our lives, have found memories, have fond memories, I'm sorry, of our childhood as using the crossing guards as our guides. As you will see in a minute, Ms. Carmelita Bartholomew, the job of being a school crossing guard in Baltimore City can be a challenging one. What I do want to address in my time before you tonight is the negative impact the reduction of crossing guards will have had on the systems school of Baltimore City Public Schools. We are all aware of the cuts City Schools have had to face over the past few years due to declining enrollment and budgetary decisions coming from the governor's office. Crossing guards have borne more than their share during these difficult times, going through enough funding to fill 321 crossing guard positions with 33 substitutes in the 2015-16 school year, to having only 246 working crossing guards and no substitutes this year. This reduction has meant for hundreds of elementary school children, their daily commute to school has gone unprotected. For most of the Baltimore City's elementary school students, walking is a primary way to get to and from school. Students are not given an S pass to ride the MTA buses for scholastic activities until sixth grade, and for that, and for many of students, economic circumstances dictate the most effective way to get to their classes and home on time is by foot. Many of these schools are located in high-traffic areas, and as a result, elementary school students are confronted on a daily basis with navigating very dangerously pedestrian situations just to get to their final destination. Just last year, for example, a third-grade student at Stewart Hill Elementary was struck by a car and killed. I'm sure you have heard of stories from many, from many of your own constituents about their children nearly being struck by a car going to or coming from school. For a school district like Baltimore City, where the majority of the youngest students get to school on foot, and a large number of those schools are adjacent to high-traffic areas, it is imperative that we do everything we can to assure safe passage for those children. Cutting the number of school crossing guards just would not make a whole lot of sense. In addition, the proposed reduction of school crossing guards' minimum workday from four hours to two hours does not, does a disservice to these employees and also to the students they serve. By ignoring the particulars of the job itself, school crossing guards must report to duty in uniform twice a day, once at the beginning of the school and arrival of the students and during the afternoon. The traditional four-hour minimum payment recognized this fact about the job, realizing that with such a small window in between shifts, the employee essentially had to stay local and remain on the job for almost the entire school day until the last child has safely crossed. Though it may appear crossing guards are only working two hours per day, they are essentially working twice that amount, not really being able to leave their post or find other employment during their time in between the beginning of and the ending of the school day. Slashing the minimum hours from four to two will mean that many crossing guards will have to seek alternate means of employment, as the halving of their pay with little opportunities to make up for that cut by finding another job that fits in that window coinciding with the beginning and the ending of the school day will be a large fit for those guards to take. For these reasons, the City Union of Baltimore supports this City Council resolution, which calls to restore crossing guards' personal and the four-hour pay in the upcoming 2018 budget. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Carmelita Bartholomew from the Crossing Guards. And Ms. Bartholomew, if you could state your official position title, please. Thank you, ma'am.
First of all, I want to say good evening to everyone, not just you guys, but everyone, my fellow crossing guards, everyone in this room. First of all, my name is Carmelita
Ma'am, if you could pull the mic down a little bit.
Go like this.
Yeah, it's flexible.
Well, you know, I'm sure.
Didn't say that, I just said pull the mic down.
It's not a Barbara Mikulski podium.
Okay. My name is Carmelita Bartholomew. I am the representative of the Crossing Guard Division for all the crossing guards of Baltimore City. I am also the crossing guard that is out on the streets of Baltimore City. Now, I'm gonna make this a little bit more interesting because I'm gonna open you guys up to reality. It's not just the video, but most of the time, when we're not out there, the kids that cross the street, most of them don't cross like that. They will not obey the signs. They will not do what their parents tell them to do when they send them off to school by themselves. Now, I have witnessed many fatalities throughout the years that I have been with the Baltimore City Crossing Guards. I have been with them for almost 15 years. Love, love the job. What I don't love is the fact that every time someone gets into office, guess who they look at to try to eliminate? And that's us. And that's not fair. You know, we put our lives on the line for someone else's child. You know, most of us are working 2 and 3 jobs just to make ends meet, and it's hard. You know, because some of us, we're in school, we have kids, we have parents that we take care of, we have car payments, house payment, I mean, you name it, it's a payment. And don't even think about the summer, because the summertime, guess what? We get just a paycheck that can barely buy groceries for 1 week. I think that's a shame. I think that is. We're standing out in that heat. I mean, we're talking heat, smiling, greeting everyone, not just the kids we cross. You have parents, you have adults who want us to cross them. And guess what? When we hold up that sign, the majority of the time, we get a motorist that wants to run that stop sign. That's not fair, because when there's a child, and I have experienced it myself, Greenmount and 21st, no stop signs, no light, no light. And you know what? I only have 5 kids to cross, but it was the dangerous corner in Baltimore City. I mean, dangerous. I had to literally push the child and their grandparent out of the way because a motorist did not want to stop.
Ma'am, I apologize for interrupting, but I ask that you address the committee because this is televised so that you're speaking into the microphone.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Understandable, thank you. So, let me just explain to you something, but first, I want to ask each of you guys a question. How much are you willing to get paid to stand out in Baltimore City's intersections that are so dangerous that sometimes you can't even see them coming? Just think about that. And now, I'm gonna tell you our story. We, as crossing guards, have witnessed the increasing dangers each and every year of the dangerous intersections of Baltimore City. We have not only just witnessed that, some crossing guards had to move because some of the intersections and some of the neighborhoods that we work are so dangerous with gang-infested that when you ask them, "Hey, sir, can you please move your vehicle a little bit up because it's in the crosswalk and I gotta cross some children?" Well, guess what? We get the negativity from that. I personally, personally got it. I asked this gentleman back in 2015, "Can you please move your vehicle up, sir? I have to cross this young lady and her kids." Do you know the guy got out of his van, his beat-up minivan with a gun and told me I need to mind my business? I said, "Oh, no, that's it for me." I had to leave, and I had time left. I was that frightened. I thought the man was gonna take my life. I thought he was really gonna take my life at that moment. I had to call my office and let them know, "I quit." But I had that one sergeant who stuck her neck out for me and said, "Look, Carmelita, come into the office. We can talk about this." The next minute you know, I was relocated. And I'm a happy crossing guard. Anyone who knows me will tell you, this girl smiles through the thick and the turd that she goes through. And believe me, I go through a lot. And when you stand out in these intersections and they tell you, "Hey, your job or your pay may be eliminated," it makes you angry because none of y'all know what we go through in those intersections. We have people cursing us out every single day. Even some of the kids don't want to listen. I mean, we're talking 5, 6-years-old cursing at us. Like, really? Where did you get that from? I don't want to stand out there for a little bit of pay, and I'm not going to, and I'm letting you know this now. I don't think any of us will stand out there for just 1 hour a day, getting paid for 1 hour a day. None of us will. I know I will not. And you know what? There will be no crossing guards, none, in Baltimore City. Now, I ask you this. Would you rather, for Baltimore City, to have crossing guards, get them out there, get them paid, let them be happy, enjoy that they gotta go to work every day? Some of us get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, gotta catch 2 buses just to get to that work site, just to get to that work site, and make sure we're out there every day to cross these children, to cross each and every one, because some of the parents can't cross them. They have to be to work the same time we do. So who's gonna be out there? You? Are you gonna stand out there for what, 8-something a day? And put your life on the line when we hold those stop signs up in the air and ask those kids, "Wait 1 moment. Make sure it's safe." When we think it's safe for them to go out there, here come a motors. Don't want to stop because they're too distracted on their cellphones, in a hurry to go to work or go wherever they're going, or talking, not paying attention, won't get out of the crosswalks when we ask them. I mean, really. I'm just angry, I'm upset. And guess what? All the rest of the crossing guards are upset as well. We want our pay. You don't give it to us, guess what? There's not gonna be a crossing guard on that street to cross these kids. Would you rather have a huge lawsuit from millions of parents that send their kids to school every single day? Do you want that on your hands? I'll tell you what, New York did something about it when they came up with it. New York went ahead, they made sure crossing guards was out there because they figured, "I'd rather have a crossing guard out on that street and pay them such-and-such money instead of having a lawsuit." You see, we don't make what you guys make, but we're willing to stand out there for what we make now and cross these kids. I'm mortified that anyone wants to cut our pay and even eliminate some of these corners. I don't care if you have 5 or 6 kids to a corner, to 40 to 30. A child is a child and needs to be crossed. I was eliminated from 2 corners, 2 corners, because I didn't have enough kids on there. But you know what? Those parents were upset. They called the news crew, they did petitions, they were upset. But guess what? They kept getting told it has to be 40 or more. Why? Why? It makes no sense at all. Each and every day, kids are almost getting hit. We're almost getting hit. In the same incident that you were talking about, crossing guard in South Baltimore's district, a kid stole a car, ran the stop sign, and decided he's gonna hit not only just the crossing guard, which put her in ICU, but hit the child and killed her. So, I'm gonna ask you again.
Ms. Walker.
And think about it. How much are any of you willing to stand out there in these dangerous streets of Baltimore City and put your life on the line? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Schleifer?
Do you have a question?
No, thank you.
Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation because it does give a lot of food for thought with your job. And I also like to thank Cub for coming out representing the hard-working crossing guards that put their lives on the line, and also thank my colleagues that were the lead sponsors of this bill, bringing it to the forefront. And more importantly, and I guess I would like to emphasize, crossing guards, they have built relationships with the parents and students. And, you know, in my travels in the morning, I can see firsthand how those relationships that have been built with, you know, the parents putting the safety of their children in their hands. And we're talking about personal relationships. These young people know the crossing guards firsthand, so they're almost like extended, you know, second parents greeting the children on their way to school. And you gotta also remember some of the crime-infested areas of these intersections. I have, I guess, kind of 2 questions that are mainly focused for the Department of Transportation and through some of my experiences, not just with crossing guards, but the intersections that they man. There needs to be a lot of attention put on the actual crosswalks. I have to make, I get calls from constituents asking, "When are they gonna repave the..." I shouldn't have to do that. It should be a constant check on making sure these intersections are constantly, you know, reprinted and everything. That shouldn't, that should be a regular thing for DOT. Also, you know, I know that the crossing guards are mainly deployed at the elementary schools and middle schools, and this has been, I guess, a practice for years. And you need to rethink. We have some high school areas that have really terrible intersections, and I think of the one in my district, one of the ones that comes out in my mind, Poly and Western. And because, and we know where that's near 83, it's the light rail, it's the, we have a child hit in that area at least once every year. And I know there was a parent advisory group there, and you were kind of ready to implement a citywide pilot safety program partnering with, I hadn't heard any more about that, but I think, I thought that was working, at least the beginning stages, and we really need to get back to that. There's, I haven't gotten any more information about that. And then the second part, and you can just kind of sum up the answer to all this. Since we're also building these 21st-century new school areas, I'm thinking of Pimlico, how are you, you know, are you really working, you need to work hand-in-hand on the streets with that building and thinking of a plan of how you're gonna implement those crossing guards in those new schools that are gonna have new things happening, you know, they need to be a part of that planning, not just, you know, putting a crossing guard there. They need to be, they're, they have great information on what goes on at that intersection. So you need to have them in the talks and the communication of the building of those new areas. So I'd just like you to respond to...
Yeah, I'll try and address as many of them as I can right now. Patrick Fleming, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. So, to get back to the first one about re-striping the crosswalks, we do go out during the summer in between the school years to address as many of the crosswalks around the schools and on the kind of designated routes to the school through the community as possible in the summertime across the city. But if there is specific locations where crosswalks need to be repaved, we ask that people report it to 311, and we can address it in a timely manner.
So do you have, I'm sorry, do you have anyone that you send around just to do checks of all the school areas?
Yes. We have people that go out and do an assessment to see if the crosswalks need, along the route that is kind of designed for students to walk to get to the school.
And... Because I know the intersection right there at Coal Spring and Greenspring, I had to make calls and push to get the lines on that street, and it was like nut, and that's another main. The kids come there to walk to Greenspring to Kip and Edgecombe Circle. So, go ahead.
Yeah, so we do, yeah, they do go out and we do a dry, and get as many as possible during the season, you know, before school starts, you know, in between, in the summertime. I'm not sure about the program that was happening at Western or Poly-Western.
Maybe Poly.
Okay, okay, I'll do some research and we'll get back to you and see what's happening with that.
I know Cole Fallon was part of that, and I know she's gone, so maybe...
Yeah, we can find out where, and with the school, we can, we'll find out where it is.
That was a pilot that was starting, and it was almost like teaching the students and so on, and then it was gonna transfer to all other high schools, especially since we don't have crossing guards at high schools.
Correct. And then, as part of the INSPIRE program, we are working, kind of even now, as the schools are kind of even in their conceptual phase, to look at what the, where the school location is going to be, what the routes will be to the schools, what improvements need to be made along those routes to be able to address that it is safe for students to walk. And is it, you know, addressing the sidewalk that is in disrepair and repairing the sidewalks, that it's a safe walking route, addressing the crosswalks and the pedestrian lights and things like that. So we are looking to address those things before the, in the process, you know, multiple years out to be able to get funding in the appropriate time and address those issues as the schools come online.
So are you including someone from the crossing guard team in these conversations since they are on those streets?
Not right now. We're working with, we work with the schools themselves to address those issues.
There definitely needs to be someone, their firsthand information and would help with design and the need. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Pat, real quick, I think I heard about 15 minutes ago, the intersection of Greenmont and 21st.
Yes.
That's in 12th District?
That's the 12th District right south of St. Anne's Church.
Can we get a traffic calming study of that intersection?
Sure.
And have that, please, expedited, just based on what we've heard?
Yes.
What does expedited mean?
Quickly.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pretty sure expedited means between now and your death. Actually, Patrick, these questions are actually for you as well, but the first one, actually, I think that Chief Ham will have to answer. Chief, can you tell me how many physical elementary and middle school buildings that we have operating right now?
About 100.
100?
It's 177 buildings.
Buildings, yeah, but like...
So, middle schools and high schools, it's about 100.
Okay, what about elementary? Well, no, everything but middle, everything but high. I just want middle and elementary.
Probably like 125.
125? So, we have 125 of those buildings, but only 35 of them have the safe routes to school. So, Patrick, do you know offhand which 35 schools have the safe routes? Can you please provide that to the committee? Also, can you tell us, inside the video, it also talked about the flashing, Chief, you can sit down.
We'll take them.
Also, in the, in the video, which was great, by the way, Councilwoman Middleton and I were discussing which schools they were actually walking at. We did recognize one, which is Arlington Elementary in Councilman Schleifer's district. Can you also tell us how many of those yellow flashers that we have in school zones, but also, and which schools they're at? And if you could do for, for this, it would be great if you could provide this also in a map form so that we can see how they're dispersed throughout the city. We know sometimes things typically are all in one area versus another. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Trueheart, you know, anything that I get is gonna be available to the public. But yes, please, could you please provide that? Do you know how much they cost per, per one? All right, thank you.
I want them everywhere.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask finance a question, if I could. It's about the, the mayor has added one and a half million dollars to the upcoming budget. And for which I'm very grateful, and we all are. But I know that you must be, I know that by your report, when I earlier asked you, you had budgeted for a two-hour year this year, but everybody kept you at the table. And now it's never gonna be two hours. It's gonna be four, thanks to the mayor. So, so I'm looking at full employment, 290 positions funded. And I'm wondering whether that, I mean, that's what we want. And that means no positions budgeted, but not fun, but not, funded, but not enacted. So can you sort of give us the skinny on what, how this all comes out?
Sure. The fiscal '18 budget will fund 290 positions.
Actually fund them.
So they will be funded.
Whoa, whoa.
Yeah. Now, in terms of how many of those are filled, that's an operational issue for DOT.
But they have the authority from the budget to fill them all, right?
Yes.
Good. And maybe we can just keep on that schedule, like not go backwards anymore. And I understand all the issues coming from the state of Maryland, but it's just like a baseline. If we can go there and then if we need to build from there. Because I, I know that I've got a lot of people in my district worrying about those, the corners that got left out when, when people started to get moved. And we need those, like Kirk Avenue in my district, like really? And around Abbottston, that has the tiniest little kids in the world. So we never got that covered again. And it was because of this new standard of 40 or 30 or whatever. I don't care if, honestly, I really don't care if it's one kid and that kid needs to have somebody to get to school. We should make sure that child has that, that safety. And meanwhile, we're trying to attract new kids into the schools so we can close the gap of funding. And I think that's important, too. So that was my main question to you. We're gonna get, we're gonna get funded for 290? That's gonna be an increase of 44?
At the four-hour rate.
At four hours?
Yes.
It's a brave new world. All right, thank you.
Certainly is.
Good, all right. And I think I, I did have a question. Major, so Major, I mean, pardon me. Colonel Kason is here from the Department of Transportation. And I just, can I just ask her? Are you in char, you're in charge, aren't you, of, from DOT, of the crossing guards? Okay. Well, I guess I'll leave her alone after that. Because I, I call her all the time about where crossing guards are and why they're not here and things like that, and abandoned corners and all that. So you're with this program, right? All right, Colonel, thank you. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Sneed?
I just had a question. I think it's for DOT, so it's probably to you, Patrick. Based off of what they said, it was only 35 schools completed. So is it, are we going to finish the rest of the schools? Well, is that the plan for the?
There will be a process to address all of the schools. It just takes time to address the individual needs of each school and then, you know, identify funding and implement the plan.
So when would be the plan to, like, when the goal date to complete it?
I'll have to find out. I just don't know. I'm not intimately familiar with the program.
And then who is the person that's actually doing it? Is it the maintenance people at the schools or is it actually DOT that?
It's DOT that is working. We have a, within our traffic division, we have.
So what are they, if they're not doing stuff like that, what normally is that crew doing? I'm just curious. What are, if that crew is not?
Oh, like actual maintenance? So they're doing, you know, additional maintenance of, you know, repairing crosswalks, re-stripping streets, just general maintenance throughout the city, in addition to implementing the safety routes to school, physical work?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Colleagues, anyone else questions before we go into testimony for the public? Councilman Schleifer?
Yeah, can you discuss the call-out process a little bit more? Maybe you wanna just talk about how that, you know, that fills in and, you know, how we get a sub out there and proper timing?
Okay, here she comes.
Okay, so when crossing guards call out, because we don't currently have any substitutes, supervisors are directed to redeploy where possible to the most critical corners in the area. And sometimes the supervisors themselves are required to work those corners. In the past, the police used to do it. But that resource needs to be focused elsewhere. And at one time, yeah. So that's the current, that's what we have to do currently.
I got you. And so in general, how far in advance do you know when someone's gonna call out? Is it something like a last minute in the morning?
Generally, they call out 6 o'clock in the morning, 6:30, right before their corner time. Unless they already know that they're sick, they might call out the evening before.
Got you. So, I mean, the resolution, one of the things that, that we were looking for, and I just wanna understand if there's, you know, what type, if it would cause any issues for you, would be on the call-out procedure that after the, the crossing guard would call you or whomever they're instructed to call, to also place a call to the principal of the school and possibly, if there's another representative?
That is, that is the requirement of the lieutenant or the supervisor to call the school to let them know that there will not be a crossing guard at one of the corners that generally does have one. That is a requirement.
So that was one of the items that prompted putting in this resolution. Because I had gotten a bunch of complaints about it. In fact, I heard about it even before I assumed this role, just from attending community meetings, that people have been speaking about that process, perhaps not necessarily happening in an efficient manner, which I now understand if the person who's supposed to be finding a replacement to cover that, you know, cover that post also needs to call the principal. And what are they gonna do first? So I would just ask you guys to look at and see if you could adjust that possibly and, and ask, you know, the crossing guard perhaps, if they would have minded to call the principal directly. So that this way, as the supervisor's looking for their replacement, that they're, you know, that they're not blogged down and, you know, worried about having to call the principal. So simultaneously, you would have them looking for a replacement, supervisor would be looking for a replacement, as well as the principal will send somebody out there, whether it be a teacher, whether it be the principal themselves. It could be, you know, anybody, anybody within the school, you know, would go out to those corners. Because we had, unfortunately, we've had some incidents in my district where there were problems when the corners were unmanned. And, you know, the principals or other parents in the school would say, well, if we would have known that somebody wasn't gonna make it that day, we'd be happy to go out there and fill that role because it is so important.
And we will do that. But again, just a month ago, that was a meeting that we had with the lieutenant to reiterate and make clear whose job it is to contact the school, even if the supervisor's looking for a replacement. It's now her job to make sure that those principals are notified in a timely manner that they will not have a crossing guard.
So, so whose role are you saying, after that last meeting, you're saying the supervisor is still required to do that? Or with the crossing guard?
The lieutenant, that, we have two levels. We have sergeants and one lieutenant. The lieutenant is in charge of the crossing guard section. And there are crossing guards in charge of areas. So it's the lieutenant's responsibility to now call the principals. That way, we know that it's done.
And whose, whose responsibility is it to find the replacement? Is that the sergeant or the lieutenant?
The sergeant.
Got you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Clark?
I just wanna follow up on that, if I, if I may, for a minute. But there are no substitutes.
Not right now. They're not. We are studying some corners. And we, when, when we have a definite number, then we will know exactly what we need. But we need to make sure that we finish up the current process that we have. We have some corners under study. And once that is finished in the traffic division, we will know exactly the additional number of guards we need.
Right, because you're gonna have, now theoretically, you're gonna have 44 more crossing guards capable of being hired in the coming July 1. I'm not a mathematician, but I, I think that's correct. You've got 30 corners that were abandoned. One of them's on Kirk Avenue. And maybe two of them are on Kirk Avenue, I might say. But you're gonna probably look at the locations. I would ask that the Department of Transportation surrender around this, if it's less than 30, we, we, we don't go there. 30 kids is like, I got a school with 222 kids total. And 30 kids is a lot of kids, even if, if it were a school of 1,000. But if you would please look at eliminating that criteria and look at the corners that have been abandoned as the first places to replace guard, extra crossing guards, I would be very grateful. And look at having some substitutes. If you have some, then you could, and I don't know what they're paid and I don't know how that works. But, but if you just had a couple, then you could send them out to just fill in because the police now are too busy and short, short staff themselves. Just suggestions, but I hope you'll take full advantage of recruiting and hiring guards to go back to those 30 corners, first and foremost. Thank you. And thanks for the good work that you do and all the good information whenever I call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now, we're gonna take testimony from members of the public. I'm gonna ask that members of the public limit their testimony to two minutes and address the committee directly. Excuse me?
Oh, that's Kim.
Because in the, so in the interest of everyone's time. So she, she is representing, stop two, Ms. Trueheart.
Don't get into it.
She's a member of the council. It's her prerogative to ask questions. We're gonna start with Mr. Paul Hartzell from Mount Royal Elementary Middle School.
Hi there.
Mr. Hartzell, if you could come up to the podium, please?
Yeah. I guess a few of you know me. And I've been here for 44 years.
And if you could pull the microphone up, please, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm not Barbara Bukowski. Anyway, I've been here, North Avenue and Mount Royal for 44 years. Mary Pat knows me, Leon. And here's the picture of our intersection. And I'll tell you what. I know my crossing guards that are not there any longer more than I know my central district policeman. Think about it, off, Major Ham. I, I've been there 44 years. I, I saw a girl get hit at that intersection. And we found a guy crossing. Why is there crossing guards at the Park Avenue Pharmacy in Bolton Hill, but not at this intersection? Think about it. I think that there should be, wise are people than me that look at if they should be redeployed, just like they redeploy police officers where there's a problem. But they, I knew, I knew my crossing guards. And I think it's a shame, maybe two hours in the morning's enough for a crossing guard, but definitely three hours in the evening. And I knew a gentleman, Mr. Lee, who was out there like postman, rain, snow, sleet, or whatever. And I just wish it'd be, be restudied. And why, at the most, I think, you think Coal Spring Lane at Polywestern's more dangerous than Mount Royal Middle School? No, look at this column. That's a, you can't see a car turning. And I appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hartzell. Next, we have Ms. Henrietta Scheffer from South Spring.
Okay, hello to everyone. I'm Henrietta Scheffer. I'm Henrietta Scheffer, and I'm a crossing guard. And I've been a crossing guard for 43 years at Girlande and Pret Street. And I love my job. And I think we deserve to be paid properly. And I think we should get better uniforms. Because they give you a raincoat and you go out in the rain and raincoat a tear up. And before you can replace another raincoat, you gotta bring the raggy raincoat with you. It's just a hassle. The things that we're given is not as, as good as the things that the ones that's standing down in the middle of a harbor and everything has. And I think somebody should look into that. Other than that, I love my job. And I'm gonna continue being the crossing guard. I thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Janice Hyman, PTO President of Liberty School Number 64.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm representing Liberty Elementary School Number 64. At Liberty, we have 454 students at our school. We have three crossing guards there. However, we're in a business district and our school sits on a fork that is governed by quite a few streets. We actually need two more crossing guards. One at Liberty Heights and Garrison, because our children come from that area to come down. And I'm scared to cross that. And I live, and I have to cross it to bring my granddaughter to school. We also need one at Forest Park and Garrison. Because when those people going to work, going out of security, they turn that corner, they hit that corner, it's a mess. We also need a flashing light there. We have one. It barely works. It works when they wanna work, if the weather's good, if the weather's bad, whatever, it works. Maybe, maybe not. Not only that, the reason why I'm saying this is that 80% of our student population walk to school. Not only do they walk to school, we have a duty center there. We have a head start center there. And some of the older siblings walk their brothers and sisters to school. And it's a real major concern and a major issue for the city of Baltimore to look at this issue. Don't just sweep it under the rug. Look at the issue for what it is until a child gets hurt, then somebody wants to do something about it. We need to prevent these children from being hurt and make sure they get there safely. And with the rash of crime shootings in our area that just was recent, we really need people at these corners and at these intersections. We don't need substitutes. We need full-time people. And if you're going. And if you're going to hire substitutes, you need to hire someone within the community that can actually get there on that post, not have to come from East Baltimore. And it may take them two hours on a bus ride to get there. Look at the resources that you have available. Maybe the principals at these schools can say, have a list of substitutes that's in the community, or even volunteers that's in the community that can help out with that program. That's what I have to say.
That's a good to say.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hyman. Ms. Kim Trueheart, Liberty Elementary School.
As you heard, we've got over 400 children at Liberty Elementary. Not only do I advocate for the children there, but all over the city. When our new Shop Right supermarket was being built, I actually brought in the Maryland Department of Transportation and a young lady who is a member of our community, Camille Burke, brought in a gentleman who ran the safety department around schools and we walked the neighborhood and we identified the shortcomings. And unfortunately, you know, that doesn't happen across the city. And I think that's a disappointment that we have, that we continuously disrespect our children. We don't show them that we care enough about them to protect them. You know, we had this program called red light, speed light cameras, whatever it was, that was supposed to go in schools. And now we're hearing that that program is going to be re-initiated. I'd like to see a plan, and that was my comment from the rear earlier. Don't suggest to the Department of Transportation anything. Demand a study be done. How, in collaboration with the reintroduction of speed light cameras, and now that we have 290 funded positions, are we going to protect our children? That's what this is about. It's not job security. And the fact that anybody would propose a FY18 budget and not do an impact assessment is ridiculous. And I'm glad the mayor has come to her senses and put the money back into the budget to accommodate protecting our children. But if you don't use those words to these people, right, then you're not representing me and you're not representing those children, because right now, they're vulnerable. They're very vulnerable. And you obviously don't understand that, okay? So maybe you and I need to have a conversation around what the purpose of this hearing is. Because if you're not directing, right, the mayor to take action, right, because you can't tell him, direct the mayor to take action on our behalf to protect our children. And I haven't heard a plan. I want a plan. I want a deployment plan that talks about how every corner that an elementary school child has to walk is going to be covered. And if that is not adequate in this budget, then you get them frigging police officers who do nothing all day to get on these corners. Take more money out of their budget if it's necessary. But you better come up with a plan that we, the public, right, get to vet around protecting our children going and coming from school, because this is outrageous. You got to stop wasting our frigging money and time.
We will now go into recess, we will not be voting out this resolution. We will announce at a later date a subsequent hearing to get together to vote on this resolution as well as the previous resolution we heard but did not vote on regarding the consent decree. Thank you. Please check underneath your, please check underneath your seats for any belongings that you may have brought with you.
Let me give you, as a result of this hearing, a report, a study-